We don't need the money. I appreciate it, so... and I think, I think it's great. I think being a city that doesn't charge contract... Because, you know, the other thing, I'll be brief here. You know who pays this registration fee? It's not the contractor.
It's the homeowner.
The homeowner's paying us. You know, so it's almost like what I'd like to do is if the mayors are telling them, hey, look, when they tell you the quote, then turn around and tell them to subtract a hundred because in our city, you don't have to pay a hundred. And just, you know, after they give you the money, tell them to deduct a hundred dollars because that's the standard fee across the metroplex for every contract.
And there's probably a few that will leave that fee surcharge and argue how they deal with it out there.
I'm sure they will, but, you know, that's where we have to be vigilant, you know, as consumers. I think it's great. Any questions on the left? Motion to amend the fee ordinance?
I'm...
Yes? Well, discussion only. Right. Okay. What?
Okay, something's my fault.
I hope to amend the agenda to say... Alright, thank you Clint. Alright, next up is discussion of utility rate study and that was by me, so Clint, if you could hold down the, uh, the, I think that's, let's see, nope. So I've got this printed as well for rates, it's easier for you to look at. So periodically what I do is I go through and look at our, um, I'm looking at our rates. And so what I do is I look at, so I look at our water rates and our sewer rates and I compare them with, um, the cities that are adjacent to us. I compare them to Little Elm and I compare them to Lake Cities. So for instance, on the top there, you know, what the water rates are, you can see that, for instance, for Lake City, for Lake Village, your first 2,000 gallons is $21. That's the rate for the first 2,000 gallons. For Lake Cities, your base rate's $90. It's $90, just to... It's actually $80 for no consumption. And then it's $5 for the first two, so it's $90 for the first 2,000. Little Elm's about 38. And then you can see the rates, everybody's in the sixes. Lake Cities is up around eight and we're in the threes and fours. Now... So then I also have in the second, is everyone gonna blow that up Clint? There you go. Okay, so for instance, what I did, some of these usages, so you know, if you use 3,000 gallons, we're like at 24, Lake Cities at 95, Little Elm's at about 40. So if you use 20,000 gallons, so the average Lake Village person uses about, we use about 19,000 gallons in the summer, that's the average. So if you were in, uh, Lake Cities, your water alone would be $198. Ours is 87. So Little Elm is 154. So our rates are about 40 to 50% below everybody else based on usage. Now, what does that mean? Well, that's fine. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that anything's out of whack. If, if Little Elm or Lake Cities is having to buy surface water, you know, for $4 per thousand, then they gotta, they can't charge 30. So it's really just to see if, if something's really screwed up. If you're charging 12, everybody else is at 6, we know, we better have a good explanation. Something's messed up. But what it looks like for us is that, you know, our rates are considerably lower than everybody else. Again, so where does that come into play? Well, where it comes into play, where I'm going with this is, we need some additional money. We have bled down our reserves, we have to build back up our reserves. Okay? If we didn't need the money, then we just leave the rates the same. You don't change the rates just to generate money for no reason, just to take more money.
The reserves and the utility?
Utility fund reserves, and I showed you a chart last time where it's gone from 250 down to 70. We don't have that, so right now, if we need to do the emergency interconnect with Little Elm, we don't have the money. We, we can't actually do that right now. We, we, you know, we've got the ground storage tank in, we've got the pumps, we did a lot of CapEx. And it's really working out well. Everything is running beautifully, and we're in good shape there. But, but the idea here is just to figure out where we're at, so... And in the second, I'll kind of show you some, some numbers and we can figure out what we want to do. But that's where I'm going. I think that clearly, if we change those rates, no one's gonna argue that we're out of touch with everybody else. We're still way low. The other thing about us is, in Lake Village, you're restricted. You can only water seven days a week. Okay, Little Elm, I think it's two? I think they're doing two day a week. It's either two or one, because they have all their little flashy signs.
Yeah, I think in the winter it's three and now it's...
I think it's two in the summer. So, you know, as far as water goes, we are being outlier in many regards. But that's, that's where we're at as far as the, uh, just kind of some numbers there to give you kind of a feel where we are in the universe. Now, what Little Elm does is interesting, is they pass a five-year water plan. They, they pass it one time, has five years of increases built in. So they say, this year it's this much, 7% more than next year, 6% more than next. So they pass five years of rolling increases in a rate ordinance. That's what they do. Which to me is kind of weird, you're, you're, you're not justifying what you need, you're just rolling in automatic, it's like, you know...
They're not basing that on any capital expenditures or whatever.
Right, like for us, you know, we know, we have certain projects coming ahead where we need the money. You know, if we put in a water tower, you gotta make bond payments, you gotta raise your rates to cover bond payments. I mean, it's, everything's idiosyncratic for us. And we just need to get our reserves back up. I, I'm uncomfortable where we're at now. I don't like the fact that if another water tank came available, we could go out and get it and put it in the ground with what we have now. That's what concerns me.
We're a little exposed if we have a major rate too.
Yeah, I mean, you know, a, a single sewer repair could cost $40,000. We've done that in the past. If it's, if it's in the wrong spot, we've got to dig, you know, we've experienced that before. So, you know, there's no, there's nothing, so I'm just kind of giving everybody an education on where we're at. Could you scroll down slightly for the sewer rates there? Oops. Okay, so on the sewer rates, we have a flat fee. The other cities around us, because they're much bigger, they do this kind of winter averaging. So they use how much gallons you use in the winter, and so that's what they use. For us, we use about 3,000 gallons is the average usage in the winter. So if you look at everybody's rates based on 3,000 gallons, we're right in the middle. We're at 41, we're, because we're fixed. Lake Cities, of course, is on the high side, Little Elm, about 35. But then, if your winter is more than 3,000, then they rack it up by this. So if you use 5,000 gallons in the winter in Little Elm, you're over ours. You're, you're adding another $9 to that, you're up at like 43. So... Our sewer rates have to cover our sewer costs. And I have that as well, and, and we're, we're running, we're running right now about a $2 deficit on the sewer, if you include the CapEx. So the sewer is pretty close. I don't think we really need to tweak the sewer. If we tweaked it at all, it might be a dollar, and I don't know that that's worth it. Okay? And I have that other analysis, I still credit it. But again, just to keep a kind of a warm fuzzy feeling where we're at in the relevant universe. Now, if, if because our system is small, you know, if we had to charge 58 to break even, we're gonna charge 58. We're gonna do what we gotta do. So, so that's kind of the idea with, with the sewer rates, so... Does anybody have any questions about that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Why did these make up Lake City?
That's, uh, Lake Dallas, Corinth...
Hickory Creek.
Hickory Creek.
So there's, there's one, there's one utility company, one water company that serves?
Yes, they unify.
Okay.
Used to have one fire department too, did everything, but they split up.
Okay.
Alright. And of course, you can't use Oak Point because Oak Point, you wouldn't even want to know what Mustang charges because those are for profit.
Okay, and Oak Point's a boundary condition that's just obscene?
Yeah, Oak Point's numbers are outrageous what they charge, but it's not at Oak Point, it's, it's the company. It's the for-profit, it's Mustang and, uh, I forget the other ones.
So they're kind of similar to this Aquatic, is that what you're...
Yeah, they're huge, yeah, because they're, they're for profit. I had no ideas Lake Cities was high, but I've heard, I've heard people telling me Lake Cities was high.
So the, the reason you want to build the reserves is in case we, in case you find a good deal, say on something that we're gonna need for the future. In case we have a big problem, you know, something rights and it costs a lot of money. Is there anything else? Is the sewer, that's the rate you're thinking about, are you into that at all?
Um, a little bit, but that's kind of, we, we have funds each year to pick that off a little at a time. So a couple of big things are gonna be, the interconnect. If we want to interconnect to Little Elm up there on that well for an emergency interconnect, that's gonna be over $100,000. Because you gotta have all these valves, you know, everybody has to be protected and, you know, you can't... So that's a big adventure. And if we're gonna do that along the way up there, then we're gonna set it up to service the triangle. The school board property. Oh, okay. Because we're gonna run right along the boundary, so if you're gonna do that, you gotta have, you might as well have the mains and put a couple of fire hydrants, you know, you might as well do it, you're right there. So we're essentially almost gonna make it development rent because we gotta run there anyway. So that's a $100,000 venture. The other issue that people haven't thought about is, when the copper roads come in, we have to do the same thing we did over here. Before those roads come in, we're gonna sit down and say, do we need to relocate any mains? That, that lot on Woodcrest, that's our potential site for our well that we put in? Then we need to get an eight or 10-inch main between there and here.
Are any of the flats over there like these tiny little things that we had, what, were they four inches or something?
Uh, the shores is pretty good. I'm not sure about Hyridge.
Yeah, Hyridge and that.
But, uh, has, has everybody been down to the corner of Hyridge and Meadow Lake? You know this, where you're talking about for that fishing down there? That cul-de-sac isn't. It, it, it's, it's, it's messed up. So we have to, we have to blow that thing up and start over. All the utilities are in the wrong place there. So in the future, we have some really big expenditures down the road and we don't want to run and borrow the money from that. You know, it, it's... We, we're, we're in good shape, it's just, it's like anything, we, the nice thing about having the money is you're able to react quickly. Anyway, so that's kind of this...
The operating expenses of our, our depletion of reserves?
And, and that's true, and, and, you know, one of the things when we hit the budget, you'll see, is that success breeds things you gotta do, right?
Your cost of...
You know, but, you know, you don't want to change the oil in your car, you know, you got to. I mean, you know, there's, there's main things we have to do now, we never did before because you never had the money. Now Clint, could you go to the other spreadsheet? Okay, so what this is, and I can give everybody a copy of this if you want. What I've done is, I've got every single person's water consumption for the August, which is the hottest month of the year, which is the most repung, and for January. So I have the, I have everybody's usage, all 230 houses. So, okay, I've got them down in the spreadsheet. And then in this table here is our current rates. So if you change those rates, it will automatically calculate everybody's bill. The spreadsheet will recalculate, and in that yellow box, it will tell you how much additional money we would take in for the whole year. So for instance, Clint, on that left-hand box, okay, over there, so if you put in, uh, so on that top one where it says 21?
Here.
Yeah, for that 21, put in 90. No, just the one on the left. Because the other...
Right there where I have 100.
Yeah, make that a 90. Okay? Okay? Then make the, uh, the next line down $6. Next line's 882. The next line is 1090. Okay, so if we were Lake Cities and we put their rates in, we would make an additional $249,000 a house. No, 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 I'm just showing you, like, that's how, we only take in 146. That's where our normal, that's what our revenue is. So that shows you how skewed they are. So now, if you go back, uh, so again, I can let everybody, I can give you this if you want to play with it. So for instance, here would be an example of what, what I, let's say we lead to 21, let me go back and make that $4. Let me make that one $5. And we make, because that's the big, the 50,000, make that one, um... 12, okay. If we do all, if we do all that, we get, we generate 12. That, that's the additional money that we would get. And that would go into, um... Basically, what we, you know, that would go in reserve, that would be an additional amount of reserve. And if you can go, Clint, can you scroll left, please?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, yeah.
So what is the average amount...
There you go.
...of water consumption per house?
Okay, so if you look to the left, I know it's hard to see there. So that shows that in the summer... Can you blow that up Clint? I'm blind.
It's bigger than it's...
There you go, bigger. So what, so in August, you can see, there's 20 people that use, you know, very little. Most people use between 2 and 20. The average is, I can show it to you in a second. But, uh, you know, 68 people use that, and there's 12 people that use over 50,000 in August. Now, clearly, they're not spending 50,000 showering or doing laundry. That's somebody that's irrigating their whole two acres in the shore. Okay, that's, you don't do laundry and spend 50,000 gallons, okay? So I have a problem, that's why the rates go up, because that's a choice. You made that choice to irrigate two acres. In the winter, you can see what happens, nobody uses more than 20,000 gallons in the winter. There is no money in the upper tiers. So it's basically just a, a, here, in the summer, obviously, the usage goes up. Clint, could you scroll right, just straight right across? Keep going, keep going, keep going. Okay, there we go. This is the actual monthly usage for the last year. So in, it basically, in the, so we, we used 26 million gallons last year, in case you're curious. So in August, the hottest month of the year, the average consumption is just under 18,000. In January, it's the least, the average consumption is just under 5. For the last year. What makes us so unique, what makes us such a challenge for us, is that 4.1 there. We use four times as much water in August as we do January. To try and design something which has to handle four times the capacity. That's our challenge, is trying to operate like that. Is trying to figure us, because we, you can't take those tanks and take one offline and move it over there. You know, I mean, so we juggle, that's what I do a lot, is operationally, we juggle some of these things. And that's what, you know, Clint and I spent a lot of time trying to figure out which wells to run and, you know, that because, this is a design issue, so...
There was a lot of challenging conversations with Todd.
Yeah, our engineers, we, uh, it's amazing some of these things because, you know... That's what we actually use. Now you have to design for peak. You have to have a cushion on top of that. And so it becomes a challenge. But anyway, so this is the, these are the rates. So we haven't changed the rates since 2014 or 15 maybe? It's been like three, three years or so. Typically, the last time we changed the rates, everybody knows, is because the garbage rates changed. So we had to go down where it's anyway, so we tried to round it off. And, and we, we made it simpler. It used to be like five brackets, we made it only three. So, um... The numbers that I'm looking at are the numbers which I just entered, which was like the, the three going to four, you know, the four going to five. That's still, if you get, if you look at that sheet I gave you, that's still considerably lower than Little Elm and the rest of the cities. Remember, they're in the mid-sixes, mid to high sixes, 687. So, anyway, that's, um...
TCU, TCTQ kind of required you to punish the upper-tier ones anyway?
We, we're required to put in systems that promote conservation. We must do.
And your billing is one of those to help promote?
Yeah, that's why we have that 50,000 rate. Same with Lake Cities, they have that, that punishing rate up there. But you gotta, I don't have a problem with that because it's voluntary.
Yeah, they choose to do that.
And, and again, if you think about it, okay, if you're at 50,000 and now you, you know, with the new rate, it goes up $2, okay, that's $2, everything above 50. So if you're at 60, that's $20. Now, your bill is 400, but it's an extra 20, you know what I mean? I, I just, I don't, if you're willing to pay that kind of money to put that kind of water out, it's really...
Well, like you said, there's not very many people to do that.
No.
So basically, what we're, the increase on tier one is just 30 cents?
Yes. This was, okay, so what I did was I just, I'm open to anything you guys want to do. This was a starting point. Say, I like round numbers, it's easier to explain. And $6.83 like Little Elm, that's because of those crazy built-in increases. But what I would propose to everybody, to whoever wants to do it, I will give you the spreadsheet and you can kind of do some sensitivity checks if you want. Kind of see how it changes. We don't have enough accounts, there's no way to make that number really dramatically larger. You know, if you raised everything a nickel, it's not even worth printing Gordon's out. You know, it doesn't generate any money. So, um, but this is just a discussion item. Because next month, if we come in, it won't be a big deal, but, you know, it'll affect the budget. Because the water rates will be different. We'll have a slightly increased revenues. So, um, does that make sense? Everybody kind of okay? That's the story on the utility rates. So what I'll do is I'll leave it, anybody that wants this spreadsheet, just email me and I'll email it back to you. And then...
Just one more, isn't it?
Huh? There's four minutes, yeah. All you have to do is change what Clint did. You don't have to change anything else in there, it automatically calculates the annual change. It's already scaled and everything for the annual number. The yellow box is the only thing that you have to, that you can re, that you, that will change.
And that yellow box revenue is monthly?
Annual. That's the annual.
That's annual?
Annual, yeah. So you do all that, all that changing, and the annual number's 12,000, not a month.
It's not totally, I mean, we're not being greedy, right? We're not gouging, it's just a, it's been three, at least three years, I can't remember what it was.
We're in year four of our garbage contract, so it's gotta be, it's gotta be four years. So what I'd like to do is I propose that next month we can, and, and, next month we're gonna vote on the budget. I'd like everybody to have some ideas about this. So we can plug this number into, add it to the budget. Or leave the old number a little low, we'll be higher than that, but we'll see. But that's my working paper right now.
Does that spreadsheet show when you plug all that in, does it show, I know, I know you said you have all the individual...
All 230 accounts.
Does it show how much actually each bill, I mean, each average each month, they would be paying more? Because that's really what it boils down to when people get the bill. It's not per this amount, you just want to see the impact, total impact.
You could take that number, divide that by 12, so it's about $1,000 a month. There's 230 accounts.
And then divide that with...
About 450. Now, you know, some people wouldn't change, obviously, wouldn't change at all if they're in the, if they're in the, yeah. You know, I didn't change the base rate either. I kept it at 21.
Yeah.
That's in play too. Look, everybody else is high. You can, you know... We're, we're lower than everybody else. Now, I didn't do the analysis, I didn't finish it, but typically what you would do for that base rate is you take the water system's fixed costs. Like the operator, the depreciation, the licensing fees, all the costs that you incur before you pump the first gallon. And that's what the base rate covers. It makes you whole before you've done anything. So you, you always cover the fixed costs you have to pay for. That's what the base rate's for. And then when you start pumping, then that's the incremental rate that you gotta cover what you're pumping costs. And the chlorination, the pumping, the electricity, and that's what the $4 and $5 is most to cover.
A lot, a lot of these people that are like in the less than 2,000, it's because they have multiple lots with multiple meters. So it's, it's the same owner that's paying...
Yeah, I, I don't know any where they have empty lots with meters.
I do, but we have it shut down because we were like...
They don't pay.
We're, we were paying for it and we weren't even using it, the base rate for so many years, we're like, we're not doing that anymore.
Right.
So, I think, well, four years ago when we did this, we actually lowered the base rate.
Correct.
And that was done for, to try and be sensitive to...
To that.
No, actually, fixed incomes.
Retired people.
So folks that are actually always in the last, so we, to Mark's point, we've always kind of, we don't necessarily make, we may or not do.
We're, we're not old.
I didn't think so.
What was the rate four years ago?
It was like a...
25.
I think it was 20.
Yeah.
Was it, yeah.
I was overpaying 25.
Yeah. And then it was all sorts of wacky threshold.
It was actually kind of like, the curve went the other way. You, you benefited once you tipped over 50,000. It was not a, it wasn't the right curve.
Went down to...
With the wrong asset.
That's not meeting the spirit of that conservative.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
So last year, last time when we did this, we corrected with the base rate and then the, and the tiers to get the shape right. Now this time, it is kind of shifting all the way in. Well, not shifting up, because we're not talking, I'm changing the base rate. We can, we can change the base rate. The intention was to keep it low for fixed income.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think what we ended up doing was because the garbage rate went up and there was a tax or whatever, the franchise fees, we actually lowered it by more than what we raised it by. So if you were in the lowest tier, your total bill actually declined. Which I thought was pretty nice, you know, overall bill actually, even though we added these other service charges that add up. Pumping tax, you know, you're in a lower tier, that net went down. But, you know, you gotta, you gotta make it up on the high end. And this is standard, this is normal, upward sloping is normal.
And I think this is a very legitimate reason for, I mean, we're looking to raise builder revenues so that we can continue to provide service. I mean, we've gotten a nice string of years here, three, four years where we've just increased. Last year, I think, one house was out of water for about 10 minutes when San Mary repaired.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if we had $200,000 in the reserve today, I wouldn't have spent your time on this. We wouldn't have had this discussion because we're already there. We don't need to get it just to take it. And just because we're lower than everybody else doesn't justify raising it because we're lower.
No, we still have plans, we still have, we still have improvements we need to do.
Exactly. Okay, so thank you very much. I will look forward to, we'll, we'll kind of tease this out next month. But let me know if you want the spreadsheet. Okay, next up is a discussion of public services annual rate adjustment.
I had anticipated having this for you to review, but Republic Services has not gotten the contract and the proposal to us yet. So, um, they are looking at requesting an annual rate increase. They call it an annual rate increase. It, it is supposed to be, but we've actually gone four years now without a rate increase. Over the last 14 years, we've had five rate increases. And it's pretty, it's pretty minimal when you look at, at the rates and the services that they provide. So I don't really have anything other than I can let you know, I'm referring to you as enough to look at. We've got until December 31st of 2019 on our current contract.
About what percentage range do you know, other than the patents have rate increases to that?
It's been, it's, it's ranged from like 2% to 9%, I think. It, it, it depends on the CPI of that year. And sometimes we've been able to skate by without any increase at all.
So I can tell you, so here's some features of the new, the new thing. One of the things we've done in the past is, we, for programming purposes, we don't like changing the rates anyway. So always we talk, like, give me a fixed rate for two years or three years. So, you know, it has to be, if you're gonna do 2% a year three times, then just make it 4% for just three years running. So we don't have to change it. And that's kind of what we, that's why we had very few rate increases. Couple of times the rate increases were so small, we hated it. The citizens didn't know about it because we just paid it. We rounded everything, we just paid ourselves, we just hated it. So part of this thing, which, um, what they're working on is, they have two more years to go in the contract. Give us one rate for the last two years. We're not gonna do it another year and do it again. I don't want to change the rates. The other thing that they're looking to move toward is, we're gonna move toward quarterly bulk trash. So we're gonna get it off the holidays. Now, the advantage of doing quarterly bulk trash is that they can ensure us that they can do the bulk in one day. They'll actually bring in shuttle trucks. And they'll, they'll bring the, like, the roll-off, fill it, and they'll drop it over here and put it in City Hall and the guy will pick it up and drive, so they'll use teams. And then if we, if we do it only four times, they'll guarantee they'll do it in one day. Which is good for us because that means we trash the city only, you know, one day for four times a year. The other nice thing about that is, if we do it, we can pick the dates. Though the center being that, you know, think about it, it's the weekend before Halloween, we're trashing the place. July 4th, we're trashing the city. You know, New Year's, we're trashing the city. We're, you know, because people went out early. So we're just, you know, whereas we could pick like, okay, it's gonna be the 15th. You know, or, or the 11th or something, right? We could pick it. And I think that's much better for us. The other thing I'd asked, wanted to look into, we maybe one time a year have a... The other thing I'd ask Linda to look into, we may one time a year have a paint, electronics... Yeah, the, you know, I don't know what the right word is, toxic waste disposal, you know? Just once a year, it costs us money, it's pricey, but I think it's worth it.
You could probably even argue giving up a bulk trash is a substitute.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, bulk trash, I mean, you'll do it when you, when you do it, but, you know, Oak Point does it every two weeks, and they trash their city perpetually, and it's horrible. But, so, so those are kind of, I think, the better features of the contract that we're trying to work on. One thing I'll throw out there to consider is, oh, the other thing that's going on is, we're realigning the rates to match up with the fiscal year. They're on calendar years, which, again, don't help us, because we budget our fiscal. So, having the garbage contract go January, January is kind of messy. But, the other thing to consider when we do get the contract is, just cutting the chase and extending the contract. Whereas, we have, we haven't, the contract expires in January of twenty-twenty. So, we have life wherever that is. We have a year and a half to go, roughly, so... Considering about it, you don't have to do it, you can wait, you can kick the can down the road. But, that's another possibility over here, where we're talking about it, is to entertain those, those ideas.
Would, would they give us a, a better rate if we walk in another contract?
That's the question. Exactly. I mean, to me, that's the, you know, it's, it's kind of costly to bring everybody, you know, to keep rehashing, eternal rehashing of your, that's why we don't like doing annual rate increases. And then, so, then we gotta reprogram, you know, the sales stacks has gotta change, you gotta go into uni-billing, redo it, and two cans is going in one can, and it's a pain in the butt to reprogram.
They're a large corporation, right? They're gonna have corporate rules, want to kind of stay with them, what they allow them to do.
So...
Extended, yeah, we'd be...
It certainly isn't careless to throw it down, to say, well, I mean, I see no reason to change it. I think they're, you know, we've had them for over twenty years, so...
Choices are slim, I'm glad. Choices are pretty slim. There's not a lot of...
CWD is not an option. Anyway, okay, that's, um, that's my take on Linda's take on the, on that, but Linda's handling that, I'm not... Okay, but that, that, again, the reason why that's still happening now is because we're trying to rotate it onto the, onto the budget. The other thing that will come up, I'll give you a heads up now, is that, for example, if you look at Little Elm's garbage rates, they have the rate they charge CWD, then Little Elm adds thirty-five percent for their own surcharge, for their own, whatever they do. We've never added anything other than, we've rounded it off to the nearest, you know, quarter. We've never charged. Now, I would never suggest we do thirty-five.